All right, the call meeting to order, special committee, the whole meeting. At this time, I'd ask Counselor McMillan to read the blessing and land acknowledgement, please.
As we gather, we recognize that we are on Treaty III lands which are steeped in rich indigenous history and home to many First Nations and Métis people today. We continue to be thankful for the partnerships with our indigenous people. We give thanks for the many blessings we enjoy in the city of Kenora. We seek wisdom in our minds, clearness in our thinking, truth in our speaking, and always love in our hearts, so that we may try always to unite the citizens of Kenora. Let these principles guide us in our decision making.
Thank you, Counselor. Declare your keener interest. This time, I'd ask any member of council if they wish to declare keener interest in the general nature thereof, pertaining to items on today's agenda, or from a meeting in which your member was not in attendance. See none. Harborfront redevelopment plan project review. It's a little open with Adam and/or Megan, so welcome. The floor is yours.
Thank you. So, the purpose of today's meeting is just to provide counsel kind of an in-depth perspective into the Harborfront Redevelopment Plan, provide a little bit more background, and then allow our consultant, who has joined us today, to really give in some detail to the next steps. The inception of this project dates back to 2016. So, at that point in time, council was debating the development of a T intersection along the Harborfront, to which the feedback was is that we needed to formalize a vision for that area prior to making that type of investment. So, since that time, staff were able to receive NHFC funding for the Harborfront Redevelopment Conceptual Plan. And then, once that has been, that was accepted by council in 2019, to which we are now commencing on the detailed design work. So, I'll let Megan, our project champion on this, kind of give a little bit more detail on the steps leading up to where we are today.
Hi, good morning, council. So, as Adam mentioned, this project really started back in 2016 when we were looking at the opportunity to redevelop the T intersection, that intersection at Second Street, Water Street, and Bernier Drive. And it was felt at that time that there could be a broader opportunity to consider redevelopment of the Harborfront as a whole, so looking at a larger project scope, which would be the south parking lot, all the way to Husky the Muskie. And, as Adam mentioned, we were successful in receiving funding from senior levels of government to undertake that master planning project, which was completed in December of 2019, and which council accepted at that meeting. So, since that time, you know, we had really been positioning ourselves to move forward with next steps. And in 2020, mid-2020, council approved funding applications to go forward to three different agencies, so Fednar, NHFC, and then the Tourism Economic Development and Recovery Fund. And those applications were for the next phase of the project, which was to deliver detailed design and tender specifications. So, through this work, we're looking to develop these detailed designs for 10 of the 13 project zones within the Harborfront Development Plan. And Constantine is going to provide an overview of those zones to you momentarily. But, you know, that was back in 2020, and those applications were submitted. And then, we were successful in receiving funding from those programs to move forward with this next stage of work. And so, in September of this year, we delivered a competitive process to seek a consulting team that would help us through this next phase. And council awarded the project to HTFC Planning and Design, KGS, and Number 10 Architects at a special meeting in October. And so, I'm very excited this morning to introduce Constantina Duvry. I know many of you have met her previously through the master planning process and through other projects. So, I've had the pleasure of working with Constantina on several initiatives since my time at the city, including downtown revitalization, as well as the Wayfinding Program. And so, I guess with that, maybe I'll turn it over to Constantina, and she is going to lead us through today's session. We did have a similar session with a group of internal city staff at the beginning of November, and it was like such a terrific day. I'll just say a couple of words about that, because we have this incredible team of interdepartmental representatives. So, we have community services, members from tourism and parks and the museum. We have development services reps, so through economic development and planning. As well, we're working with folks in engineering and infrastructure. And then, we've also included Heather, who's working with us on the communications kind of administrative side. So, we have this like really incredible interdepartmental team, and we were able to sit through a similar session as the one that you're going to work through today. And we were all very, very excited at the end of it about the discussion and the outcomes of that meeting. And so, okay, now I will turn it over to you. I'm done. But, Constantina.
Well, hi, everyone. I just want to say hello to Mayor and Council, and it's nice to see your faces again after a long sort of departure, seeing you guys. And hello to, I think, Counselor Shays? Am I right? Okay, nice to meet you. I just wanted to say that I'm thrilled, I know HTFC and KGS are super thrilled to get to work on this project. You know, this is dear to my heart, and I really want to do an amazing job, and I'm just very excited to be working on it. And as Megan mentioned, we thought today would be great to do just a little refresh on the master plan. Many of you may have forgotten some of the pieces, and we have a new counselor, so it would probably be good to do that. So, we'll just run through the master plan. I have the PDF, which is downloadable on your website, I'm sure. But I'll run through you, through it very, as quickly as I can, but enough detail that kind of refreshes. And then, what we're hoping to do is what we did with the, what we're calling the CIT Group, which is the City Implementation Team of all of the sort of department heads, et cetera, is maybe talk about the overall plan, because things have changed since we did the master plan. Master plans are high level and are not detailed design. And now, we're commencing into detailed design. Just even at that first meeting with the CIT, the design is changing, you know, based on, you know, where the world is today versus 2018, 19, when we worked on this plan. And that's pretty typical of a master plan. You know, we get into detailed design, we get boots on the ground, we get surveys, topo, we're getting geotech done, so we're really progressing into more detailed design. But we'll start here with the master plan, and I can baby step you onto some of the changes as well. And as Megan mentioned, the Harborfront Business Development Plan had a very, very extensive public engagement component. We had a steering committee that represented people from the community, city staff, counselors. And then, we went through multiple design workshops to sort of come up at the beginning with the objectives. And here they are. These are the goals of the study that the community brought us to through those sessions. I'll just name them out, so if it's hard to read. Four-season destination, they wanted the Harborfront to be, to have connectivity, so meaning connecting to other important parts of the downtown Kenora. They wanted sustainability, and they didn't just mean environmental, they wanted it to be sustainable economically as well, as well as socially sustainable, and really look to health and wellness. The fourth one, and I'll come back to it after, is embracing Anishinaabe and Métis culture here. The fifth one is safety and security. The next, opportunities for business. Inclusivity, so inclusive to all age groups, all people, all cultures, locals primarily, and tourists as well. Programming, they wanted to see additional programming on the Harborfront, events and such, and they wanted it to be a place for learning. They wanted it to be a place to learn about the history of Kenora, the history, again, of the Anishinaabe and Métis culture, and also an educational area about the lake and that ecosystem, and the forest, and, you know, the environment that we're surrounded by. So, after coming up with these nine goals from, through workshopping, when we realized that embracing Anishinaabe and Métis culture became very important, we added engagement with the three First Nations that are part of common ground. We reached out to all three. We had very extensive engagement with what is now called Nissachuan, which was something different before. And we had a couple of sessions with them and continuous conversations, and very exciting, because we never did the traditional end to the project. We kept it open, because they were hopeful that they would continue to be part of this as a partner. We met also with the Chief Skeed from Wajosh Kanigam Nation as well, and had a great meeting with them, and the notes are part of this document, appendicized. And so, we had lots of engagement. That engagement, we had a spring feast, you can see the beautiful picture here, and we have some counselors there, as well as Adam and Megan. So, we had a great input, that we were able to go back again to our steering committee with our findings. And so, we workshopped through the whole process. We came up with three scenarios that, they're kind of shown here in the model. There's scenario one, which shows what we can do with the land we have, because we are, there is like a limited land along Lakeview Drive, and quite a bit of parking. And we took people through different scenarios, because parking is really important to people to have somewhere to park, to go to work, and so on and so forth. So, we took them down, exercises of what can you have if you were to take some parking away? And interestingly enough, and I can go very briefly through some of the parking, you should know that part of the study, there was a transportation engineer on the team who did a transportation study. I presented that to council, it's an appendix in here as well, to find out when those peak times are for parking and where the stresses are. The transportation engineer found three peak times during the summer and studied it. That was provided to the people in the steering committee, as they chose actually the third option, where they wanted to try to maximize the amount of amenities and business development opportunities on the waterfront, and balance that with some parking for needs for all this additional function, and try to find parking in other places. Part of that, the reason they came to that decision was based on the transportation engineer's parking study, and also part of our statistics, which found that a large portion, I can't remember what percent, it could be 70 or 80% of the parking, south parking lot, is monthly parkers. So, there is no, there's not very much parking for visitors. And when we say visitors, we don't just mean tourists, we just mean somebody who lives in Keewatin who wants to come to the Harborfront. So, there is, so we came to that thought and conclusion that, you know, there needs to be a better balance, and lots of efforts have been taking place in terms of adding parking at the rec center, or down the First Street Extension Parking Lot. And in our master plan, we explored various ideas about how to deal with that. Some of the strategies are adding more parking along Lakeview Drive, and you'll see this in the master plan. Some of the strategies, of course, were looking to provide parking at the south parking lot during summer peak, when visitors want to park, and then giving people their parking lot back in the winter. So, there's lots and lots of ways to deal with this. However, in this stage that we're headed in, and here's the master plan, as Megan mentioned, we're only going to be doing in the construction drawings and detailed design development, we're only going to be doing the, from Husky, from McLeod Park, pardon me, moving down all the way through all these zones, up to where you see the forest and the pier. So, the impacts, of course, we're not headed into some of these other projects that are bigger projects and longer terms, such as the number 11, which was the information center, number 9B, which hangs off the pier, which was the restobar, and 9C, which is a pool and sauna. Those ones are not considered as part of our project today, but we will consider them with you in terms of future development potentials and how they might tie in. So, we've been asked to further design McLeod Park. We've been asked to design the boardwalk, which we call the Indigenous Art Walk, and we can talk about that a bit more. Number four, which is Lakeview Drive, providing more parking on the north side and exploring the idea of more intensive parking on the road as well. I'm already thirsty. I have two more hours chatting, sorry. We're also looking at the tensile structure and trying to expand use of that. The master plan, we are also looking at the idea of a new washroom facility and gathering area where the tensile, the, sorry, the, what is it called? I forgot. Not the White Cap, sorry. Vistle Pavilion, thanks. And then, also, the idea of bringing back some plants, some trees, and a playground, because we lost that when we put the tensile structure in. So, looking at bringing some play elements back to balance out, you know, the performance zone, and then, of course, the pier, which will have some wonderful kiosks and activities on them, and Bernier Drive. So, I'm going to go through them a little bit more specifically, but I thought I'd outline a little bit about the extensive engagement that was done. So, for McLeod Park, we are looking at, some of the challenges of McLeod Park is it's not highly visible to people, it's not really to visitors, they're not very aware that it is a washroom facility there. There's not, the tugboat is a wonderful amenity there, but there is maybe not enough stuff to support that, to attract people, as well as, you know, just providing more opportunities for people to gather outside. So, McLeod Park is being, is the first project that we're developing, as there may be funding to actually construct it, so we're kind of pushing that forward. And in our CIT meeting, what was wonderful came out of the Braden from the museum, was we were thinking about a navigational interpretation here, but they reminded us that, you know, there's a big logging history here, and that that would be a wonderful thing to interpret. And so, we've started to explore that and find interpretive elements to put here, make it more accessible, more attractive, provide some seating for people, picnic benches to gather, as well as maybe some play features that are interactive for children to explore the idea of the logging industry, because we admittedly thought the tugboat would have a nice navigational history behind it, but it actually is more about logging. So, we, so we, as I've said, this was a master plan in 2018, and additional insights from your staff has given us some new directions as we develop this one. The next one on the list is Husky's Landing. It's not part of our scope, but of course, we can, we are thinking about it and the connection between McLeod Park and Husky's Landing, and I'll speak to that a little bit when we talk about Lakeview Drive. The next project we'll be looking at more deeply is the Green Belt. The Green Belt is, I think it was one of council's favorite because of the idea of extending that boardwalk, because what we were able to do at Harborfront is by having this boardwalk, we were able to expand the land area, which is very tight on Lakeview Drive, the Green Belt. We were able to expand that area to actually get the tensile structure in, to get the tensile structure in. We needed the boardwalk to allow people to pass by, and so it overhangs the water. So, there was also interest in controlling the geese problem there, and with the pandemic, it's become even more important to provide wider pathways, multi-use pathways for citizens to walk, and create a nice connection between the gateway, which is Husky the Muskie and McLeod Park, all the way to what we think of the more intensive part of Harborfront, where the White Cap is. So, this boardwalk is sort of an opportunity, in speaking with First Nations, to begin to talk about Treaty III land, and having some historical information about the indigenous peoples who inhabited this place before us. It also can become this beautiful walkway with artwork, with interpretation, and we can see it sort of culminating with some additional docking, which is really important for Kenora to start to provide. We heard some docking for larger boats, because right now, they just have their marine balls. And so, we started to explore the idea of having larger docking for larger boats that want to come, and also more capacity, because at the time, there was an understanding of additional needs there. In conjunction with the docks, we were picturing having some business opportunities with seasonal kiosks, like you'll see at the Forks, or in Montreal's harbor, or Halifax's harbor, where they may have seasonal activities out of the kiosks, business people perhaps renting out country skis, or somebody could be selling fishing tackle, or, you know, bikes can be rented here, or kayaks. So, there's opportunity for various things to happen on, in those kiosks. Lakeview Drive is a big part of how the Green Belt works, and how, as we develop on the Harborfront, we're hoping more people want to visit here. We'll need to think about taking away a bit of parking to be able to build that forest and playground and sitting area in this first phase of our work. So, starting to look at the idea that Lakeview Drive should have more accessible parking, there should be more parking on the north side, and by doing that, we're going to have people crossing Lakeview Drive. So, we need people to have appropriate crosswalks to get to that parking that are safe. We need cars to slow down, similar to the way that when people enter the roundabout and they enter Main Street, they naturally are slowed down by the roundabout and the bumpouts that we've put in, creating nicer crossings that people can cross, only two lanes of traffic on Main Street rather than four. We want to do the same sort of thing here, and provide a couple of crossings at Lakeview Drive to help people get across to those parking lots and get traffic to slow down. So, as part of the Lakeview Drive, we've also, with the transportation engineer and our municipal team that's on this team that we're on now, is looking at some of the ideas that we put forward in the master plan, such as the median as you come off the bridge, and having a at-grade crossing to McLeod Park between Husky the Muskie and McLeod Park, because today, it is unsafe for certain groups, or they feel unsafe to go under the road to get between those two parks. So, that's a real limit in terms of making this feel like a big connected waterfront. So, as you can see also, we've introduced the idea of perpendicular parking, so that, or angled parking, front angle, although our transportation engineer would love to sell you on back-in angle, but we won't talk about that today. Front angle, because that will give us more capacity for cars to park. So, as we take cars away, perhaps, from the south parking lot, we're finding new places to put those parking spots. The docks, I spoke to a little bit in terms of large, more capacity, and parking for larger vehicles. I'm just going to pause and just make sure everyone can see the screen well enough, or do you want me to zoom in as I come to different images? Are we all good?
I think you could zoom in a little bit.
Yeah, that would help. Okay, sorry about that. So, here is a 3D model. I'm not a Mac user, so bear with me as I, yeah, so above was the diagonal parking on Lakeview Drive, you can see the boardwalk, and you could see here in the image also the idea of having safe crossings to get to additional parking on the north side of Lakeview Drive. All of these efforts will slow down traffic as well. The docks, I already spoke to a little bit. The idea is the undulating boardwalk that comes around Lakeview Drive, giving a wider pathway for pedestrians to sit, and more places to sit, could culminate in this new dock system that allows for more capacity, as well as some large, to explore the idea of larger stalls for bigger boats. There is an opportunity, we're showing five, but as demand is required, the seasonal kiosks, they can be seasonal, but in the winter, if it's a winter activity, you could see them also renting out things like cross-country skis or what have you.
Just have a quick question on the docks. Are those conceived to be city-run or privately run?
You know, at this stage of the game, because the docks were city-run, we just thought of them as an extension to that. And the master plan in the backend has lots of ideas in terms of how you might spur on business, and if, you know, some of these could become independent businesses taking them on. So, for example, the kiosks, we envision them as being something that is provided by the city and leased out to businesses to help spur on some of that activity. However, there's obviously lots of models that can be provided, where, you know, somebody could build, you can have a businessperson build these elements. Some of the, the idea of the business plan is to try to find ways to make the Harborfront sustainable economically for the city, so whatever is the best avenue. So, in one hand, owning some things that will bring money back into helping pay for these amenities that are not business, have business money coming in, it's a way to help fund that through leasing property, or through building them yourselves and getting money from that. It's modeled, one model that we looked at was the Forks-North Portage Partnership, which has a specific governance model. It's not the only one, but it is one that has worked well for them, where they lease these things out. For example, they're common in the Forks market, they own all of the restaurants' equipment, and they lease that out, and they actually take a cut from their, from the money they make on it. So, it's just a different governance model. That's like a very evolved one, and they baby stepped towards something like that. It didn't happen overnight, but that's one model. Another model would be just to have a businessperson lease land and take that on, you know?
Constantine, can I just, sorry, Dan, I was trying to get your attention.
Sorry, Sharon.
Yeah. Can I just, as we're talking about dockings and docking and parking, and we're looking to expand our rental docking, and expand docking for visitors, are we taking into consideration that we'll need additional parking spots for, on backshore, for the additional leased docking in the summer? So, have we considered that?
So, right now, after our CIT meeting, because at the time of this master plan, things have changed since then. At the master plan, it was more considered sort of day and overnight, more casual, and at our CIT meeting with staff, they brought up that very same question of, you know, what is the mix? Do we want more monthly, or do we want more casual? So, we don't have the answer today, because we're just embarking on a fact-finding mission, such as that, you know, and that is being considered. And the city staff have been sort of, the people on that CIT are now going to study and explore and give us feedback, and tell us what mix they want, and we'll design for that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. I think there is also some pressure taken off with the rec center parking lot program or design that we're doing right now. We're actually working on that as well with the park group, and, yeah, just exploring additional sort of, you know, leased stalls for trailers and parks for more of a launching site.
Because we all know that there is a lack of dock parking in our community, and that question's going to come up for sure.
I think that's something where we're aware of, and it's good to hear from you as well, and so that's the kind of feedback we'd love to hear today, because as I said, like the master plan was completed based on 2018, it was pre-pandemic, things have changed. Things always change, but particularly now, so I'll make a note of it as well. Thank you, Sharon.
Yeah, thank you.
I should say Counselor Smith.
No, you should not.
I'm sorry, I'm not good with knowing what the protocols are.
We're fine with that.
Okay.
I have one last question, Constantina, just on the docking, please.
What's that?
I said, you better, she says it's okay. I said, no, you're not calling me counselor. Once enough.
All right, now, tone it down, tone it down.
I'm going to sort of put on my neat person hat. I hear two conflicting myths. I I I'm gonna sort of put on my my neat person hat. I I hear two conflicting myths in the community. I hear that we don't have enough docking and then and I hear that we have more docking than we need. I I know depending on who you talk to. So I'm just interested, uh, do we have numbers that are driving?
So at the time of the master plan, which was pre-pandemic and also I know there's been some changes to the private ownership of marinas around town. Um, it has changed. At this time, we had numbers, we we worked with the city to get those and we had come to the conclusion that it should be day and seas- uh, sorry, casual parking, but maybe looking at overnight and things like that.
Okay.
Um, but now we have to start over, not start over, but we have to look at that again. So we've only just launched the project, so we we have tasked um some of the staff at the city to provide us some of those numbers and we're gonna work with them to figure that out.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for the questions. Um, the next, the next um item is the white cap improvements. The white cap improvements, um, there's a couple of things that we're looking at. One was um we had reused unit pavers that were salvaged from harbor front to to build the the flooring in there. It looks like things have settled. Um, I know that the city has spent money re-leveling them. So the civil engineer, there's also a drainage challenge. Um, I think water during high level does not allow water to get out of the tent because the outlet is is in the water rather than above. So there's a few things that we've already um investigated and was part of the master plan in our discussions through workshops is to try to, first of all, improve the flooring in the white cap, that's part of our construction drawings, and solve the drainage problem as part of our uh job. As well though, um, we found in our study of the harbor front that the tensile structure um has not been utilized to its fullest, that it sits empty a lot of time and that um we need to provide. In the master plan, we provided ideas, we sat with your your tourism group and we came up with a a list of ideas that could happen under the tent to program it. To do that, they'll need a few extra things to help outfit it, things like, as you can see, you know, uh, poles, removable poles to put up a basketball net. I know that in the summer, I'm a seasonal resident, as most of you know, and um I come down and it's it's empty and I think I have two boys, teenage boys, and I was thinking, gee, you know, in the summer, this is a great place like a drop-in, you know, for for kids of Kenora, do something midweek. So things like that, a movie night, um, you know, um, more dances, so finding appropriate floo- flooring for powwows. I'm I'm showing a picture at Odena at the Forks, um, you know, dance nights like the fourth image at the Forks again. You know, there is um ways to get this thing programmed. We have an amazing uh investment on the harbor front, so that should be one of the first things we do, is make sure that this is fully utilized. So that's what we're we're exploring is what kinds of things can we add, accessories, let's call them, as well as fixing the drainage problem. Um, now we're kind of moving into, um, here's a good blow up of the tensile structure as it exists. And I'm gonna guess that the next project we're gonna talk about is in this area. Um, the the thing about the tent, as I mentioned, is once we put this up, as you all know, this was a nice green park initially with a playground. And I'm gonna just speak to these so I don't spend too much time presenting, but I'm just gonna speak to these three items here, which is the um gathering area, an outdoor sitting area and a play area. These things were sort of taken away when we built the tensile structure and it was always the intent to put something back. So the master plan um sees this area because this is where we put Lake of the Woods Plaza, which is our accessible access down to this um to the lakefront. This is actually, in my mind, is where we really need to um make, in my opinion, the first phase. Um, we really need to focus on this area to create the critical mass of people coming here, the feeling of safety, inclusion and variety activities for various ages. And the way we proposed to do that was, first of all, uh, we we provide a great opportunity for food trucks to come here, but not really great areas for people to sit. Sometimes under the tensile structure, first of all, there's no furniture under there. Um, but also it is a place that's very shady and people would like to sit in the sun. So we felt that it would be important to look at the idea of providing outdoor seating and we've provided that here for this food truck. Today, you see picnic tables sort of in in a, in the swale that we constructed for drainage. So we need to formalize that and make it more attractive for people to gather. The other element here where the the um Thistle Pavilion, I remember this time, the Thistle Pavilion exists, which is a great um place for washrooms. I know it's an info center, so it's got a lot of um um use. It's just become a little bit uh decaying, it, you know, it's it seems out of step with the with the rest of harbor front. Um, it needs to be upgraded. And so we feel like also that it's taking up a lot of real estate that could be a lovely gathering place. And this is where we thought we could really bring home um the idea of having a place for indigenous people through our workshops with them. They felt that they would like a gathering place for all peoples. They would like to see a place where they could have a fire uh pit for ceremony and for gathering for all people to use. Um, so this has been designed as sort of in concept as a gathering place. Um, and you can see this dark orange ring is actually washrooms, so washrooms and much-needed storage for the white cap. So trying to reuse this space, um, the building uh that's there today was built before the tensile structure went in. And it was always in the hopes that we could upgrade that into a new, new, new project. So number ten architects, um, uh, obviously are are very accomplished architects, so they're working to, they'll be working on the washroom storage. Um, they also have an indigenous designer who is going to help us with taking what the First Nations in Kenora tell us this should look like and trying to resolve that into a detailed design for this gathering place. Um, the concept came out of, like I said, um, people really wanting a central focus for the Miti and Ishinabi people in the area. And we pictured this as this really beautiful trellis area that could have some interpretation and could be, um, in the winter, you can imagine this would be a lovely place with the fire, um, which would something that's really missing from harbor front today. As you probably, you guys, I I was to said this at the CIT, I was like, everyone in Winnipeg has bought a fire pit this year. I bet you guys did too and and I was told, no, everyone in Kenora's always had a fire pit. Get on board Winnipeg. Um, so we just thought this would be a a lovely opportunity to do it here. It's it's central focus and gives a little more life to this area with the seating and the gathering. Um, and you can see outdoor events happening here as well. And just and to play off um the idea of that this was a park before we put the tensile structure up is starting to to introduce more tree, sorry, more trees to the harbor front and having um the the drainage that was in a swale. Here, I'm gonna just go down to some pictures. Um, oh, here's a better image. Here's a three D of what we're talking about. You can see the tensile structure with this gathering area with a fire noted and seating area. And then beyond is this forested area, which we've been told that it can't be a forest for safety. So let's just say a treed area. It would be a park that has um interpretation about the lake. It can have, um, oh, I thought I had some precedent images. I apologize. Hold on. Um, I thought they were in the document. I am wrong. They, they're somewhere? Okay, I'm just gonna keep going because I think there's some really evocative imagery that we found. The forest, uh, here it is. I jumped ahead, I guess. Um, taking that in terms of sustainability, you know, taking that swale that goes through today and and making it, naturalizing it and not having it just a a moan sodded swale, but start to put native plants in here and maybe some nature play. We've been doing lots of fabulous nature playgrounds um around Canada and they've been very successful. Um, so just for some evocativeness, I'll go back and talk a little bit about the pier now. The pier is something that has been um something that was in the master plan that actually our office did in two thousand and four based on workshops. And funny enough, we came with tabula rasa with no pier on our drawings and what did everyone do? But they drew a pier on the drawings. And I went, okay, the pier is back. So um, we really explored this idea and took it to a new level though. We we thought by doing the pier, um, as I mentioned, we don't have a lot of land. So building out provides us an opportunity for more kiosks. Market days in the white cap has said they wanna grow. Um, the the pier allows for a place to grow and not only just to grow on Wednesdays where you have your peak parking problem, which is the only time you have a parking problem, by the way. Um, but it allows you to have um a market on a smaller scale, seven days a week or six days a week, whatever works. You know, so that um you may not want the intensity of the market days that you see Wednesdays, but at least people can come to harbor front and there be some market element there. Um, it could be food, it can be um, it can be crafts, it could be business people trying out their wares on a smaller scale. I mean, it could be a multiple of things. Um, the pier also allows us to park the MS Kenora away from from the shoreline, which would allow in future phases to do other things with that shoreline. And I'll tell you about that a bit in a minute. Um, but additional seating area, more activities, um, the pier becomes a place that we can actually see some business development. But we wanted to tie a few more things to it. Um, and in the workshops, we talked about year-round activities and we went back to the Forks model and how successful the common is. And the common is an interesting model and it's not just done there because now there's, since we did this, um, um, True North opened their Hargrave Market and this is a model that you can find across Canada and the US and in coming from other countries, which is the idea of, you know, and not, this is not part of our construction drawings. Um, but number ten is on our project so that if you, if we wanna have this in the future, we can make sure that we're planning for it appropriately and not cutting it off so that it can happen or not in the future. And that the resto bar isn't part of our plan, but it was intended to be sort of like the common. And similar to Hargrave Market, if you're familiar with it, there is um, there is a restaurant, for example, called um Pizzeria Gusto and it's on Academy and they have put a little pop-up restaurant at the at Hargrave Market called Gusto North. So the idea is this is an eatery that could have smaller versions of the restaurants that you already have in Kenora. So the Brew Pub, Cornerstone, they can have a smaller fare in this eatery place, but it's mainly um, uh, a restaurant eatery with a bar. And um, the idea was that the Forks owns the bar at, um, and what they do is they make money out of that bar and it helps pay for the amenities on harbor front. That is one concept that we put forward. The other concept, so it would be that a restaurateur comes in here and they lease that space out and that's another way to make money that goes towards the amenities of harbor front. But that is a future concept. However, the idea of the common and that, um, the the other amazing thing that the Forks has done is they have been able to work with um the Manitoba Liquor Commission and have um groundbreakingly allowed for drinking all over a certain portion of the Forks. And it's outdoors and indoors. So in outdoors, all they need is a planter with a sign that says, no alcohol further than this location. And it's not that everybody needs to drink, but just having that feeling of a beverage, be it, you know, a soft drink for your kid or yourself and or somebody wants a drink and that you can walk around this whole pier and possibly the boardwalk. Um, and enjoy yourself and sit out just like they do at the Forks. At the Forks, they have fire pits and they have seating and it is packed. And um before something like a resto bar is chipped off, there's a way to test this out and it's one of the ideas for this kiosk could be a a test of this idea. Kiosk that that sells food, kiosk that sell liquor, others that sell other refreshments and that we can section this off as a place that people can sit out and enjoy a drink on the lakefront. Um, the other idea that came out of the workshops and I promise you, it wasn't my idea, but I loved it, was as winter use, the idea of a sauna. Um, you guys have um a lot of Norwegian roots in Kenora and the sauna has become very popular across Canada and in terms of extending usage of places over the winter. And um, so that is not, also not part of our phase, but it is important to mention as one of the things that sort of makes the pier um sing. It gives the pier more reason for being, is these additional sort of business ideas that can be tacked onto them. Um, the, there is also the idea of a pool. Um, here's some, sorry, here's some lighting for the pier. Um, that, some precedent images of that. Uh, our example of a resto bar that's just in Winnipeg that's on the water. Um, and then here's the, some, some examples of lake pools. Everybody at our workshop said they wanted to swim at harbor front. That was one of the things they wanted to do. Um, the problem with the harbor front is that it was filled in and it's very deep. And so there's no way to create a beach entrance as people were hoping because the the bathroom metrics show us that it's quite steep as you enter the water. However, this, we're in lake country, we're in dock country, so this is a bit large. This is a bit large scale for Kenora, but the idea of having some sort of dock, um, we kind of went full bore and and did, you know, a larger type of facility, but just the idea of having some sort of ability to go swimming on harbor front. And with the new washrooms potentially and um and and all of that, there is opportunity to to provide those amenities. And that's the way we sort of responded to the swimming idea because I I think there's other places that have beaches in Kenora that are appropriate. Um, we wouldn't be able to construct one here. And here's just a fun image of a sauna idea. Um, the forest, we talked already about. Um, a future phase, similar to the resto bar and and pool and sauna idea is the idea of an interpretive center. Um, as a future phase, we've taken away the uh Thistle Pavilion in the master plan as sort of a building that will age out very shortly. And so what do we do? Do we put the same thing back? We found something we felt was was a better um anchor for that spot. And for for um the harbor front, we thought it would be a wonderful idea to have an interpretive center. Um, a lot of people felt that um it would be a great location for visitors to come and learn about the lake ecology, to learn about the history of Kenora, to learn about the Ishinabi and Miti people. The, we haven't nailed down exactly what this building um houses, but there was lots of ideas. Um, and people felt that they wanted to see more four-season facilities, somewhere to have a wedding or banquet on the lakefront. They wanted to see a multi-use building. The way we envisioned it however would be that it would be a completely green building, that it would be net zero, that it would have infiltration ponds, you know, roof drainage and infiltration um cells um so that all, you know, that it would, that it would have a zero footprint and explore, um, there's, you know, the idea of sustainable building. There's also beside it the idea of an additional skating rink. We, you guys already have a skating rink that you established under the tensile structure. Some winters, we understand, you can have skating on the lake but not OEs. And the idea of having, similar to the Forks, where they have multiple skating rinks and then skate trails that connect them. So this, this area was conceived as an outdoor uh interpretive area that could be a splash pad for kids in the summer and in the winter it could be a skating rink. It could be an outdoor gathering area as part of this common. If we start to really buy into that idea that people can wander about, this can be part of the common. And in place of the MS Kenora parking here, we've extended the boardwalk. Today, it's a very narrow little boardwalk which is barely wide enough for a car to park its bumper over and you to cross by. So trying to expand that boardwalk, provide seating along, additional seating so that people can spread out and enjoy and try to get that critical mass down here of activity. We've also explored this idea of touching, having different ways of touching the water. Um, it is shown and proven that successful waterfronts around the world have many el- elements tied to them. And one of them is to have lots of variety and activities, as you can see through this master plan, lots of things that people can do. Um, as well as having different ways to interact with the water because, you know, the water and the lake is the thing. Um, the la- this is not part, that was not part of our construction drawings, but just part of um the master. but just part of um the master plan as a refresher. Um I was gonna just move to this section, which is um Bernier Drive One Earth, um which is part of our explorations. And this the One Earth is, um we've constructed one in Winnipeg. Here's some pictures that I took in Germany, um right before the pandemic hit. And a One Earth is just a shared space with cars and vehicles where um at times you can baller it up and have events when you like. And at other times, um it the ballards are in place, pedestrians kind of stay beyond beyond the ballards and the cars pass through, but they tend to pass slower. Um the idea was to explore um the One Earth um in between, whoops, I think I want a bigger plan. Here, let me see, we jumped to the the business plan, I apologize. Bear with me, we're on kind of the last development that's in this pro- in our project. Um the idea is between Lake uh Lake of the Woods Plaza, where we already have a table crossing, and up to an approach into a parking lot to the south, which is um in in step with the Water Street Intersection Construction Drawings. The Water Street Intersection Construction Drawings, to meet grade, we need to have an access into this parking lot for the float planes and parking as far as this location. And we conceived that, we understand that market days would like to expand. Um this is another place that they can expand as well and put seasonal tents up um and close the road during uh the few hours that are open that they are open. Um this is also a great place that if we have Harborfest and you want to have um similar to other large festivals where there's more than one um show going on at once, you can have a smaller venue right here on the street and block it off. This idea had been discussed for Main Street many years ago about creating a pedestrian environment for events. Um I thi- it was found during, yeah, the downtown revive that that didn't really work for trucks and um cars. But certainly Bernier Drive is the perfect location for something like that. Um it could be ballered off during events and then the ballards taken off after the event. Business as usual, you can still have parking on a One Earth. Um you can still have cars on the One Earth. It just allows pedestrians to feel more seamless during events with this whole harbor harborfront. And knowing that a lot of these have been, and I believe will be, restaurants and retail on the main floor, as you build your harborfront, these main floor um businesses will want to become part of this harborfront, sort of planning for that seamlessness with the harbor with the water and um people being able to to walk across here without curves and those kinds of impediments, making it fully accessible. Um the last item, which is not part of our project, was another business development idea where we found some land where a condominium or boutique hotel um could be, land could be sold off or leased out. Um there's many, many more ideas, such as fitness circles and circuits and um, you know, ideas of how to bring active transportation here, land shuttles and water shuttles. A whole bunch of ideas came out of that extensive um workshop with um with people. Here's a winter view as well of how we could make it exciting during the winter. Um we actually spaced all our docks to allow for setting up hockey rinks and and snow sculptures and skating so that and fire pits so that you can have more of a winter use of your harborfront as well. Um so that was the master plan in 2018. And as I mentioned, since then, we've already met with CIT, the it could the city implementation team, and we've learned lots of things since that. And so the master plan is high level, it's similar to the 2004 master plan we did, um which was very high level. And if you look at the drawings that we did for the master plan and actually look at the construction drawings that we did, the tender drawings that we've been hired to do, um they look different. Um they are in the same general zones, they have the same flavor, but they evolve with additional discussions with mayor and council, with city staff and experts in your roads department, in your parks department, in your tourism department. As part of our process um for the next stages to get to construction, to complete construction drawings, we have planned many touchpoints with your city staff. Um we have um included in our proposal, which was accepted, to meet with First Nations to take these initial seeds of ideas and make sure they're in keeping with what they think is appropriate as we detail it. And as I mentioned, we we make ensure that we have an indigenous designer on our team to do that respectfully. Um we um are going to have public engagement again. We we promised the public last time, we've planned to meet with them once we get through design development and you are all happy with where we're at, where this project evolves. And then there'll also be a finally final open house to show them what the final resolution is for the projects that we had been hired to do, which is most of the zones apart from the ma- mostly the buildings. So not the Resto Bar, not the sauna pool, not the interpretive center, but the washroom facility, the new washroom facility to replace the the current building, which is aging out. So that's the master plan. And that's um how we how we moved from the 2004 to building. I've been lucky enough to have been involved, not at the master plan stage because I wasn't with our office at the time, but our office did the master plan. And I've been lucky to see um Canora evolve. Because when I joined, we were building Main Street in the the roundabout. And came that came from the master plan. The master plan showed a roundabout and we built one. And we we showed Main Street having broader sidewalks and pedestrian state safety and we built it. You built it, we designed it, you guys built it, you paid for it. But I mean, you you these guys are finding money to support this stuff. So I'm very excited and very positive, but we want all of this stuff to be based in reality. And similar to those projects, they evolved through the process. So we're just at the start of the project. And today, I'm really hoping that I can hear from you guys. We can talk about the overall, some of your overall feelings about the project in terms of the ma- master plan and things that have happened since. What's new, what's changed for Canora? What's what doesn't seem in step anymore with what you guys want to see for the harborfront? And then what I did with the CIT is we went zone to zone. So we started at McLeod Park. We opened up the drawings, I brought drawings today. We can put the mass, we can have it on screen as well. And we'll lay out a drawing somewhere. And we can walk zone to zone and I will write copious notes and answer your questions. And we can talk about your hopes and wishes and what things you're concerned about. And uh those will be my marching steps to our team, which I didn't mention, I should have, is includes KGS Engineering, who actually built the harborfront uh and Main Street with HTFC. So KGS and us, we have a long history together building things. So um also on our team, as mentioned, was number ten architects, um who will be looking at the building component, which is the washroom and storage for the structure, for the tentile structure. Um and who else is on our team? Well, KGS brings quite an envelope of professionals. They bring structural engineers, municipal engineers, transportation engineers, water resources engineers, which is to do with the marine technology for this pier. Um we also have biologists, environmentalists, environmental engineers on our team. I'm probably missing somebody, but we've got a really full slate of people to make sure that this project is um done properly. And that's my presentation, right? Does anybody have any general questions before we go into the sort of workshop?
I'll just make some positive comments.
Oh, good, I like positive, but I'll take both.
Part of the issue we have is we're trying to visualize what it's gonna look like. So I've been fortunate to um, you know, go to Halifax twice in the last few years and be in Victoria for. And so when I you talk about, you showed the steps coming down into the water. That was a huge thing that they just re- at least it wasn't there four years ago. It was there two years ago in Halifax, where along the harborfront. And I think they built a big hotel or apartment condos behind it. But it just allowed people to, you know, sit, have lunch, feet can touch the water and it was very, very active. Um the what McLeod or the the robbery geyser could become, I flipped everybody, hopefully, I don't know if it went through, but it's from feature, you're future, you jerk gardens in Victoria. And it just, it it kind of, it's on a program and it, you know, it does amazing things and then they could put light. And the other thing was down on the um the main thoroughfare, Dolls Road, which is one of the busiest streets in in um in Victoria. They narrowed the road because they they added bike trails and they added running trails. And they they changed the path. And so it slowed down the traffic, but and that's what made me think, and you showed it in your drawings, is at McLeod Park. And at the we have this little parking lot where they put pedestrian walkways across. And it really, it's it slowed down the 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 traffic, but it really made it flow really well. So I I'm seeing a lot of things I've seen work in other areas being proposed in this plan. And though I'm not gonna jump out of my seat and like Megan where she was so excited when she, I don't even think you stopped for sentences there, you just, you were so excited. I I see the potential here. And uh so I'm excited to hear as we move forward the rest of the morning and early afternoon. So uh councillor Van Wellingham.
Yeah, just a couple of quick things that I found that interesting. Your part on safety and security in the harborfront because we're looking at some major changes there now with different staffing and stuff so we could work together with that. But uh I wonder if it came up at all, a number of years ago, we did that intersection at Water Street, coming over, it's millions of dollars to change that. And they looked at coming through the uh the park there, extending Third Street and having one lane and move the Senetaph and having a Water Street locked off there and move the Senetaph there and be a one-lane over right from the corridor so we just extend on Third Street.
Yes. Is that a question? Sorry, we had looked at. So um I'll tell, so what we did is, I actually worked on the Water Street Intersection project. I'm so embedded in your computer community. And um the big debate is and was, you know, can we get move the Senetaph? And every time that comes up, historically, people are outraged. Um people are really tied to that Senetaph in that location. Um so um it was explored and it can be done if we would be allowed to move the Senetaph. So that's that's the biggest thing, that's the biggest hurdle there. Um there is, the Water Street Intersection, um however, would be a bigger intersection than what we can um physically fit between the museum and the new art gallery. Um it is a little bit tighter in there. And so in truth, if if it's the only way we can get people through economically, then let's do that. But um if if we if there's monies for things like a Water Street Intersection from infrastructure coming down the pike, um that is gonna give you a lot, a lot more um mobility for trucks and things.
So I just wanna, I just wanna dig in on that a little bit more. So I I understand that there's a vision of that intersection that has nothing to do with the Senetaph. Um that's that's my understanding from staff internally, that that we that we we've explored um drawing driving intersection from Bernier Drive. There's there's sort of a hill there and and some rock. It's my understanding that there's a version of that project that has nothing to do with the Senetaph, that would that would just see us regrading.
Yes.
Is that accurate? And yeah, and I understand, just for just for councils, just to jog council's memory, I understand that there's this mythic list that we have called deleted projects. Is that right, Heather? So I I understand that I understand that council has considered this concept before and it's sort of been shuffled to the deleted project list, which I I've never seen that. Maybe one day I'll see it. Um but so thank you for bringing up the question, councillor Van Wellingham, because it was an option that we did want to have a conversation with council. We weren't quite ready there yet, but it it is something that we need to be having as part of the conversation around this project, so um.
Yeah, and I should I should say, Kyle, because I think I misrepresented something. And that is um in our drawings, when we did this concept, we ensured that this whole master plan works with the Water Street Intersection and without one.
Yes.
So it but we showed in our drawings the intersection, it was just chosen to to show it with. But it can be shown without as well.
For for sure, well, for my clarification, wa- was that this council that considered that?
I was just gonna ask whether it was the end of last one or the start of this one. But we did have a healthy debate on it. And we're at the point where we we did run into a lot of problems. We we were gonna need to divert traffic, well, they did it.
Yes.
And we got a lot of opposition from diverting it through that area. That was before the gallery was built.
Yes.
So it's even narrower now. Councillor Mellon.
Yeah, thank you. Um Constantine, thanks for the update. It's nice to be refreshed. I I continue to remain excited about the possibilities here. Back when it started, I think, um Mort, you were a strong advocate on some of these events. Just a couple of points and I I believe you got them covered, so you can stop me. Um the way it's set up and and you've got the trees and the sensitivity to the water with the sidewalks and uh walkways. We're in the process of completing a sustainability action plan, which uh, excuse me, which addresses some of the environmental components uh and and with the concern with climate change or climate breakdown. I think that's, and I'll leave that without him, if that's a document that maybe you could look at. And I think you've got many of those elements. Very pleased to see with the number of elements with the indigenous culture that are integrated uh into it. And I think when when you're talking about the tugboats and the braiding with the pulp and paper history, I think there's another element that maybe can be blended in that too. And that's um the indi- the indigenous water roots coming from the communities around the water and to the different rest areas. I think that would be um add to the uh history of it. And one, probably way out there, when I I just thought about it, when I looked at the replacement of the Thistle Pavilion, with the circular building and the top on there. Is there any remote possibility, for example, I thought in the summertime, for wedding ceremonies? Not not the receptions, but the wedding ceremonies? The potential of that and the and the view in the viewing area? And I also thought uh maybe some small events could take place there if it was built strong enough, because it's just a beautiful spot. Uh let me see my notes. No, I I think that's it. And and as we do develop our new strategy plan, I think they will they'll blend quite well together, so. I uh I remain excited. Thank you.
All right, Constantino, did you have something, councillor Smith?
Yeah, I just, um I haven't got the end of the document yet, but I thought I saw a chart where you phased in and possibly, um you know, staging some of the construction and maybe costs associated with that. Um did I miss that or?
Uh no, I I guess um it's in the document. Uh we didn't, I I didn't want to take up too much time presenting, but we can definitely look at that.
Is the goal today not to hear and then get a chance for input as opposed to getting into the fine detail?
No, I just wanted to know what it, when you talk about, I thought we were talking about the Husky Walk here being phase one, um perhaps to start this summer. And when I look at those kind of timelines for the project, I think that's kind of like a tight squeeze.
So we've been asked, um in the proposal call, we were asked to um have construction drawings completed in end of February for McLeod Park only. And the rest of the construction drawings will be our due due to funding arrangements um December 2022. So really, just McLeod Park, we need to get finished. Um the construction drawings based on timelines and the rest of it will have the full year to complete. Um those are not implementation dates. I imagine Megan would maybe like to speak to that. That's probably more based on, you'll have shovel-ready drawings and it will depend on where the funding comes from and where and what and how much. That'll drive phasing. So for example, there may be a lot of money out there in the short while from the governments for green infrastructure. We probably know there is, you know? Um so that might push forward projects related to green infrastructure. We probably know there is, you know? Um, so that might push forward projects related to green infrastructure. Does that helpful?
Yeah. And I can add a little bit more information to that. So as we had, you know, applied for the detailed design project back in twenty twenty, there had been some new opportunities that came up as, you know, part of this COVID nineteen recovery funds. We're almost running like parallel processes right now. So we had applied for the detailed design, um, funding. We were waiting for a decision on that. But then in the interim, we had also seen an opportunity to apply for funding through, it was like, I think, um, the CCRF and I, I apologize, I can't remember, Community Capital Relief Fund or something like that. Um, but we, we thought, okay, maybe we could be in a position, if we can start the detailed design work in the fall, um, maybe we could actually be in a position to undertake some capital work in twenty twenty-two. And so, um, we were lucky to receive a decision on the detailed design work. And, um, so that's allowed us to start this project now. And we applied for, uh, McLeod Park and work at Husky the Muskie, so a refurbishment of Husky the Muskie through that funding program. And, um, basically all we're trying to do is like get our ducks in a row so that, you know, if and when we get a positive decision from this funding program, we will be ready to proceed with twenty twenty-two construction. And why that's important is because it's just the terms and conditions of the program. Like they're, um, only allowing one construction season for work to be completed. So you have to have everything done by March thirty-first, twenty-three. So we understand it's a bit of a tight timeline, but things seem to be lining up so far. So, um, that is why McLeod Park remains the number one priority to complete the detailed design work right now. And then hopefully we'll receive a decision on our, our funding submission soon. And that will allow us to, to move ahead with capital construction in twenty twenty-two there.
If you're phasing in the project, you have year one, how many years do you think this, um, the, the total project?
I think it's, I think it's a really important question, Counselor Smith. And so just, uh, as we go into the capital budget, you're going to see the McLeod Park project is going to be, um, you know, in twenty twenty-two. And then we've, we've staged it out over in the five-year capital budget. So you'll get a chance to see that, uh, on December third and you'll get it, we'll get a chance to have a conversation on it. It, it's an interesting conversation about trade-offs, right? We're trying to minimize the amount of time. There's construction down on the harbor front. We're trying to maximize those funding opportunities. Um, trying to make sure that the harbor front is still a place that people can go and enjoy, um, you know, in parallel to the construction happening. So I think there's an opportunity for us to have that conversation in more depth, um, on December third. You know, nothing's set in stone yet, but there is a certain element, like Megan said, we need to be sort of planning in twenty twenty-two for twenty-three and twenty-four. So there's a lot of multiple processes that we need to sort of keep in mind. And, and so I think we can have a really fruitful conversation on that at capital budget. Um, unless Adam or Megan have any other details they'd like to, nothing's set in stone. That's a decision that'll come for council.
Yeah, no, I, I think I just reiterate Kyle's comments there and add that, uh, you'll see the, the buildings components as well. Um, a lot of the rationale behind excluding that from this scope of work was primarily driven by, uh, looking at, you know, in the phasing out and building codes change as well as designs. So making sure that, as well as being the, the different funding, uh, sources that may be able to, um, uh, drive those initiatives. So for example, if you look at the water pavilion, well, that might be a good fit for an SCM pot of money tied to doing a net, uh, zero, um, type of building. Um, so we're trying to structure in a way which we maximize the, uh, the external dollars to what that could be available. But also looking at, um, just being reflective of some of the distinctions between the civil work and facilities which have, uh, different characteristics. So.
So Constantina, can, can you just tee up for us again? What, what are you looking for today? What do you need from council today?
So what I was hoping is to talk about, oh, I was hoping, I have a large plan or we can just use this plan. I have a large plan I can put on the floor even. Um, I was hoping to just get comments regarding each of the zones that we are doing detailed design for. And, um, just get some general, uh, feedback in terms of if there's something that we should know, that we should consider while we're detailing it at this stage. Um, and if there's things that have changed or things that we'd like to see different or, or be aware of. So just a little round table about each zone. So we can commence that. I was, I was thinking there was going to be a table in the middle. Are we okay with just me zooming in on the part of the plan that we'll talk about?
That's up to council. We can move this coffee stuff around and we can roll out some blueprints there.
We can have a big table there. Just that, those, the intent is to put it on that big table there.
Oh, right here?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
People are just gonna kind of.
Perfect.
Let council have the table.
Yeah. And, and you know, we can still, there's lots of meat in the, um, in the master plan that we didn't discuss today. That is going to take time. So I welcome, you know, Counselor Jay, I think you've had a chance to read it, but there's a lot of things in there that we did not even discuss. Because trying to keep, I'd love to have ten hours of everyone's time, but it's okay.
I'm not even sure of thesis. Cause this is of two thousand and eighteen. It's curious, what, what does staff want to change rather than their priorities?
So are you guys ready to workshop?
Yep.
This is the really fun part. Yeah, this is when I'll put my mask on. So, and, uh,
I just want to remind you that prices there's more coffee in that dinner.
I'd talk football.
Um, unless you guys rather sit where you are. I might, I tend to draw a lot of.
Well, I wish there was in the, a lower table so we could all stay and just.
Move that, but it's not very big.
It's not large enough.
No, it's just the mic.
How difficult is it to move my desk into the?
Hi, I was just. We can pull Andrew's back. Andrew can pull yours back. Cause hi, I was just using.
Okay. That way we can all, gives Constantine a chance to move around and we all see it.
Yeah, it does help because everyone's looking at it together.
Yeah. I just wanted to watch.
Yep. So this is the.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Which is. Exciting times Kyle. Exciting times. Which page, twenty-one?
Wait, I brought you. I brought the master plan here. If anybody wanted to look through it. Um, please look through it. And so Megan, I'm going to tell, I want to take notes.
Yeah, I can contribute.
All right. So is everyone here who needs to be here? Where's Andrew?
He's right here.
Oh, there you are. Okay. So I, I'm going to suggest that we start, um, cause this might be the easiest way to go about it. It's just to start at the cloud park, which is the one we're working on, um, more feverently right now. Um, I'll tell you some of the things that we've found in looking at it in the, in the master plan. Of course, you don't get a chance to look at things in detail, but there is some steep slopes on the walkways and that sort of thing. So we found them to be quite steep, steeper than I thought. So there's going to need to be, for McLeod Park really accessibility will be an important thing. Um, and as we discussed, I think the idea of navigation and the river, I think that's really an interesting. I think it was in the master plan and then we kind of got in our safety chart, talked a lot about the tugboats and logging. So there's a way to bring both those stories here. Um, the idea here, as you can see, was to have maybe this, this locking, the doors, the washroom on this side. And these are just staff doors. It feels like a, a, like a, a mechanical building. It doesn't feel like a washroom. So we're going to try to make this appear more welcoming.
So it's still the base. You're going to use what's existing?
The building, except to maybe add some attractive trellis. We have some really fun ideas that we'll reveal yet. We're still developing them, but like fun ideas to really, as you're coming over this bridge, you really notice that more than you do today. Cause right now, it really does look like a mechanical biker. So we wanted it to be just a washroom. It's great the washroom's there. And I wish it would look fine to me. So I just think it is going to be a little more welcoming, a little more exciting as you come over. And as I said, the elements to, you know, building a great water front is to provide lots of things for people to do. And so we're going to make sure that there's more to do than just the tugboat that we're going to build on that.
Is there anything to do with that bolt that's part there? Yeah.
That's the tugboat. Yeah. So the tugboat would pull.
Stay in there?
It's staying there, but we'll just, we're going to work around it. And actually having one out there, the decking needs replacing. It needs, it needs some upgrading. But rather than just, um, upgrading, we're going to give it more life. It's actually a really cool thing to look at. It just doesn't have enough around it to really attract people and get them over here. I mean, um, having opportunities to sit, picnic tables, that kind of thing. And so any thoughts or comments about that vision?
Does it involve, like, is it, or is the site remaining as it is or are you cutting into hills to expand it? What, um, you know, like you had a tiered.
Yeah. So the idea of this tiered sitting was just to provide the more seating along this, this existing hill.
So it's looking towards the water?
Yes.
Okay.
However, that is, I'll be honest, we've been sort of, we've been designing in the background since we did that first meeting with the CIT. And because of this walkway, which is shown wrong in our modeling, it's a walkway takes you down. And the walkway that's here are very steep. They're, they're not too accessibility requirements.
And they don't flow well.
No. And so we've actually changed the design quite a bit from the master plan already. Um, and of course those, when we see change to the design, um, you know, we're moving from a master plan to design development. That will be shared with our project manager and her team. And they'll tell us if we're off, if we're off our rocker or keep forgetting that I'm being filmed, but you know, it's a classic way I talk. So, um, yeah, so they'll let us know if we're going down the right path. They haven't even seen how we've evolved it. So, um, it's a good place to talk to you guys about it. And, um, like I said, we're bringing in the logging history where we have some elements of play here as well as picnic tables and trellis like we showed. McLeod Park might not be the hardest, easiest, easiest one to talk about because it's, um, sort of isolated from everything else. We can move on from that one unless anybody has, um.
There's not really a lot of changes. You're just cleaning it up and make.
Well, cleaning it up, providing seating and having a little more interest. Building on that type of, you know, rebuilding on what.
But it's something you can do without impacting everything.
No, we want. This parking is so important. We didn't want to touch it. So going on to Lakeview Drive now, as we discussed, you can see we've added a parking lot. So, and we have a parking lot here as well. And the problem is we really want, similar to when people enter the roundabout and they slow down because it's a real pedestrian environment. We feel that if you want to consider this whole thing, up to Husky the Muskie as your harbor front, the transition to being at the harbor front should happen here. That's when people should slow down. Some of, there's some methods that we can do that the transportation engineer is going to work with us on. And that was, and in the concept plan, we also have an engineer. We, the idea of adding a median, sort of like if you, I'm going to use your own city. So at the end of Second Street, everyone comes barreling down the hill, down to Lake of the Woods, uh, the Blue Hub, remember? Barreling down. We added a median. We put some banners in and we put thumbouts and it slowed people down. And that was the worst intersection. We added some crosswalks at appropriate places. By doing those things, you, you force people to slow down. So as soon as people feel like they're getting squeezed, they slow down. So by slowing people down, we can now find safe places. Um, we're figuring out where this is. It's not going to happen exactly right here. We're working on where the safest place is with the engineer. However, in concept, we want people to be able to cross. Traffic to slow down and then be able to cross at the pertinent locations to get them to the parking lot safely. Um, we've also, by adding, as I said, like we, when we put the boardwalk in, we, we gained so much land that we could put this thing there, you know? So by doing that on the Lakeview Drive, which is very skinny amount of land, by, by being able to bring this walkway and going over the water, we now gain so much room to get some diagonal parking in here and really intensify the amount of parking that you can have along there. And that also will slow people down.
Was there ever any consideration just how the walkway over the water all the way?
So the reason why we haven't done that is because, um, every time we put a pipe into the water or up here with fill, we need to replace that habitat. So, and also because we're trying to be, um, look at this in a sustainable manner. I didn't even get into all the sustainable features of this. We wanted to do the undulating also because we wanted to naturalize the banks in the areas and to provide.
So is this a natural bank or will staff have to go over the boardwalk to maintain that in summer?
They would, they would have to, um, hopefully it's naturalized so they won't be cutting grass. We don't want to see this as sod. This is rendered inappropriately to be messy, you know, native plants. Yes, holding the bank. I'm just going to, also, we felt that it's, it's a nicer experience. If you look at this image, you can see that if you do just the boardwalk continuous over, it's the same kind of view, you know? But the undulated boardwalk kind of creates different perspectives as you walk it. That's kind of the thinking. And also we, we able to widen it in certain locations where we can have, this represents.
Bump house where people can, you can put benches or whatever so people can look up.
And maybe there's sculpture, something interesting in each of those locations. So there's something to really like excite people and get them to walk this whole procession.
So before we go, the only thing that Husky Muskie is, I think you can talk about docks.
Well, this, this area, we had talked about docks, but we haven't.
But I'm sorry, it was a floating dock. I think that's the term.
Yeah.
So is that so people, what was the purpose of that? Would it just have to people come off the lake? They can just park, walk up, get photos of Husky and Muskie and just.
Yeah.
We don't want people parking like sharing company food and leaving their. I'd never do that.
I think that, um, in this state, in this phase of work, we're not looking at Husky, Muskie at all. But you know, um, maybe that's not the best idea. We're trying to find opportunities for people to interact with the water. A good idea that, Husky the Muskie is a tricky one because the paths are quite steep there too. It's not part of our project, but I think that's something that needs to be looked at in the future. Um, one of the things that we did propose that we're not doing is the idea of making this more interesting. You know, the, the, the geyser in the, like in the water, we think like with some, with very little money, it's not part of our, it's part of the master plan. So I'm allowed to talk about it, but it's not part of our, this phase. Adding a little bit of lighting, you know, at night, you know, you could see this being a lot more playful and interesting. But, um, that's a, that's a whole other, a whole other project.
So if you were to naturalize this whole shoreline without keeping geese away?
Yeah. And actually, um, geese don't like grasses.
That's right.
So, you know, even if we, if we were to put grasses in these back areas rather than, um, sod, you know, you're going to have less geese. There's other ways to get rid of the geese too. But yeah, these are probably the most, uh, effective without a lot of effort. So that's the idea.
This is what I was talking about with the.
Ooh, that's beautiful. Like you could see how this could be a little more exciting.
And if you had lights, like.
We had.
Obviously they've, they've got the plan.
We had worked with, um, a company in Winnipeg when we did the master plan. It was quite funny because everything has been sort of talked about before. Cause I called them and I said, how much would it cost me to add some lights and excitement to this? And they sent me a PDF from, I don't know when, two thousand and three for this. That they had talked to somebody in the city about it. It was quite hilarious. And I'm like, oh, okay, no new ideas. This old one's coming up again that we didn't get to. Um, but this, this was part, you know, this isn't part of our study now, but it should be something. but it should be something that you guys think about as a potential opportunity. Yeah. So the boardwalk, the idea, so you sort of have this, at some point, you know, the beginning of this boardwalk, that you have a nice little node that stirs you on this whole thing. And then the idea would be along here, some people felt like it would be really interesting to have fitness equipment, so that there's a linear sort of fitness circuit. That was in the master plan because somebody had brought it up. Is this the place for it, or is there other ones in?
I'm sure you know how we've got it.
The Kinsman.
Yeah, so other places, they have it every, so as you're walking, you stop, and you come and adventure more, so you're just focused in there.
Yeah, and that's what people talked about. However, if maybe since this, those other facilities have gone in? We don't know.
And they're not used.
They're not being as used as much as possible. The intent, I was only brought to happen. My intent was to, was to talk about animating the harbor. So you actually have people doing something.
Yes.
And, and, and once you see people doing something, then there's more of a...
I agree.
An idea to, to join in or at least be there.
There's an opportunity here of being a linear thing, to do something. So does a fitness circuit seem like a good idea? Or are we looking for something different?
Well, I don't want anybody watching me exercise.
The person that I prefer after what I saw is more places for people to sit and, you know, families to have picnics and, and, you know, you stop where you look or...
I agree.
As a, I, I think that would have much.
Okay. Yeah, and I think right now, both those things are happening in this plan. Our intent was to be able to make it wide enough so that somebody could even get by, a group family with a stroller and a couple of people, and even a bike could get past them if they wanted. We have to study the whole bike aspect still.
Okay, I was gonna ask, that was my question about that.
So if this was, Victoria, what they did was, they built a sidewalk and narrowed the road, so it was angle parking here. The bike passes in front of it.
Yeah.
So you didn't interact with, with the traffic?
It was off the road.
It was, yeah, it was, the parking was in between the bike path, running path, and the, and there was big transports because Dolls Road, that's where the shipping containers come in.
So...
So they're still going up and, which would be just like our transports that go through town.
And angle parking is death, death to bike, bike to left side. You know, my way, how you cut it.
But that's why Sharon...
Yeah, that's why you move the bikes to his front.
Yeah, exactly. But I think that we need to have a consideration for a, a place for bikes to go for sure.
This is my bike. So what you're saying is, the car, sorry, not great drawing here on this one. The bike is way bigger than the car, sort of criticizing them, so I scaled, sorry. And then you're saying, and then the bike path, and then the pedestrians. We'll make them more to scale.
Yeah.
It's not a huge bike route anyway. It's not safe crossing that bridge on a bike.
Yeah, this is the, this is the issue right now.
And, and to be honest, so when we studied it, there was no formal bike paths.
And it's what's happening, right through our community.
Yeah. There is, there is, they're pretty quiet, but there's quiet streets too. And there's quite a few, I know how long these are, they're really long. There's lots of room for a car to back up. It's very comfortable to back up because we made them so long, which means a bike feels fairly comfy to come through there. So we did, when we drew the section through this, and that's what we're studying right now, is, you know, although we know you're at a bottleneck here, you know, providing maybe a bike path on that side that someday this could expand? Or do we just bring bikes onto this boardwalk for more leisure riding? Because you have, you have two kinds of bikers, right? You have your commuters, who are just gonna wanna be on the road. They're not gonna wanna, and then you have your more leisure family, maybe a kid on a tricycle, you know, that, you know, isn't gonna wanna be on the road. So, and, and preferred, even the commuters would like something like this. They don't, they wanna be separated from the vehicles, it's safer. So we can take a look at that right of way and see the best way. But you're right, it kind of all ends here because they're, and I, and we're gonna study, actually, it's one of our questions to the, the city implementation team, is what is, what are their thoughts in the future of this? You know, is there, is there ever going to be, you know, a bike path on that bridge?
So in the case of that, what cyclists in this community have learned to do is share those, share the road.
Yeah.
Because we had never considered bike lanes or paved shoulders throughout the community. Now is the time to do it with every project. Because people are discouraged from riding for active transportation because we have not built that infrastructure in.
Yeah, so everything.
It's important when you're designing to do that.
Well, and we're, that's what we're studying. This is good timing because that's, we're studying this cross-section right now to understand how we can fit all these things. And in the original design, we did have space for, for bikes, but we knew there was nowhere for them to go.
What they do, and so they share the road. They've learned to adapt to the dangerous situations.
It's that why, because I was asked to bring this up because people know I was coming to this today. It's right from there, all the way to there. And even on Burnie Drive and Abbott Cyclone that, that is the worst place, this whole section here for cyclists. And these are, you know, Abbott, and I don't know how many there are, but I, I was, I was contacted to bring that up, that right from here and then, you know, even provided ideas about, like a, like a boardwalk, but it's caged.
Yeah.
Where it extends out and then you go, and I know that's kind of outside of the scope of this.
Hanging off of the bridge, right?
But if we're gonna look at that at some point and be serious about active transportation, even if it isn't done right now, but there's provisions in there to do something at some point.
Yeah, and I think that this, the, outside of our study, but, you know, I'm not sure when this bridge will need replacing, or, you know, that's a 20-year project, you know what I mean? You know, how, what's the lifetime of this bridge, do we know?
It's a lot longer than that.
It's, it's gonna be way older, right? So, you know, understanding, you know, from a structural engineer, if, you know, if you can build something off of it or not. You know, I don't know structurally what you can do with that thing, if there's anything that can be done. Because a boardwalk across here, obviously, will work, but there is, we did joke about, not joke, we talked about the fact that there is the old buttments that would held the previous bridge, I guess. And just the idea, you can see in the master plan, you know, everybody wanted a connection to Tunnel Island, which this is all low and marshy, so they would have to transition to like floating boardwalks. But, you know, there was a lot of talk about how can, how can we, how can we do that?
This is also a problem.
Yeah, which is for sale right now, so.
Yeah, so it would be, you know, interesting to, to think about a pedestrian bridge or something like that in the future, but those are very expensive items.
And we're talking, we're not talking a lot of people that use that.
No, I'm just, I was just asking to bring it up.
And it's seasonal.
It's a little further up than that, actually.
You guys, I think some of this is, is, yeah. It's probably marshy, city land, and then it becomes hydro. It's kind of a sort of ownership. I should look at that, I don't know.
What's, like, this is our boardwalk. And this is our, where does it come, like, is this?
Well, this is, oh, this is, this was all boardwalk. And this is like connected to the existing pathways.
So do, did we gain all this here because we're gonna get rid of existing sidewalk? And we're gonna move all the walk in lower, closer to the water?
Pretty much, yeah. And, and I think this needs a little more resolving when we're out there.
No, that's fine, I was just trying to...
Understand that.
Make sure that we realize that this is now, those old sidewalks are gone, and that's how we gained.
Clean them up the goosebumps.
Well, we're, we're making it safer for parking.
I think that we will.
That's, even with the geese is a bonus.
We will...
It's not a bonus.
I think what we can do, you guys though, is in terms of the AT, is as we look at this, we can explore how, rather than designing something that, if something changed here and suddenly a way to get people across and a bike more safely by adding, well, like a lot of, you know, I mean, like adding them, you know, I'm not sure structurally how much they could do, but you've seen people do a little can and provide, you know, some kind of space. We'll just make sure that there's room to accommodate them. And then, even though it dead ends, that's a future project, but at least it's there until, and there's, so that's a good, good point to bring up.
Why, why the engineer preferred so, in their version, come this way and back in a nice spot?
Yeah.
As opposed to just pulling in, but then backing into traffic? Is that a standard, to do it the way Keith recommended?
So, so to be honest, nobody wants us ever to do a back in, but it's actually safer, it takes less room than front end. And it's safer because when you're establishing yourself into that parking spot, you're already on the road, you already stopped everyone, and then you back in, right? And then when you leave, your eyes are in front of you. So back in is actually a safer way to park, but people are not used to it. And in our workshops, we did bring it up during the master plan, and nobody wanted it. I just went through this...
Isn't that a roundabout discussion?
I just went, I know, I know.
Nobody ever used it.
We just went through this with another municipality, and I won't say who, and they completely pieboshed it because they just went, "Oh my goodness." Like diagonal, you guys are used to diagonal, you have it on Main Street. They didn't have any in the community, so even diagonal parking was a big deal, front end. And also, because of the fact that you are clear to go and you're establishing on the street, whereas when you're backing out, you always have a little room, you know, on Main Street? We provide, Main Street, we provided a little extra room. So when you back on, onto Main Street, you notice you have room to do that, right? You're not backing right onto the lane. You can see, you need to have to physically provide more space for pull-in than back-out.
Well, no one's ever seen me back up there. It's not gonna be...
You know what, it's, it's, they put it in front of our office on Vanatong in Exchange District in Winnipeg, and at first everyone needed it, but now, you know? Like the roundabout, people catch on. It is something that we can explore.
Well, I think some of the new, for some people that are anxious about some of the newer vehicles with the technology on them too, you know, more superior.
I, I never had that, that rear, for a while, the rearview camera. Now, I can't even believe how much I depend on it. Yeah. I drove my husband's car today, and I was like, yeah, like, driving without that rear thing now.
Prox, is this to scale? Does that represent how many additional parking spots we need?
Yes, there's actually in the master plan account. So with the master plan, we, we tried to balance out the parking we took with what we brought in, plus taking into account the first street parking lot as well. And I have to look back in the numbers to find exactly what we did, but we did...
But anything we would take away from here?
Yeah.
Would be replaced by the new one and the...
I have to double check, this is a great question. It would help, yeah. That's a great question. I can't remember the exact numbers, I can flip through the book and look.
No, that's okay.
But the intent was, we did a parking study, and we found that the issue wasn't finding parking. The issue is people wanting to find parking beside where they work. So that you have people who park here who work here. And so, the, the, the challenge with that, and the people who are on our steering committee, I know not every librarian agrees with it, but, you know, is that, well, if this is all monthly parking, how to visit that park? Are we making the visitors, get them to use the park somewhere else? You know, so do we want the parking for visitors or for the monthly parkers on the park? You know? And so having enough for, for people who want to visit here, as well as, you know, facilities, and perhaps these parking in the winter, when this is less visited, you can, you can give monthly parking parkers their stall back. Like maybe they park at First Street or the rec center during the summertime when it's busy, and then they get their stall back. So there's different measures we can do. There is even talk about a shuttle that can bring people from the rec center.
That was my vision is, when's the last time we did that, Adam? Two years ago, Adam, with the market?
Yeah, the market days, it was funny when we were doing this.
On Wednesday.
We said, "Oh, you guys should do a shuttle." And they said, "We just started one," you know, so...
Because, I'll give you an example.
Yeah.
With, because of COVID. What would happen if we made this all summer long, where there's no party, and we put in more, like we, we talked about with the, you know, paddies all down? And if you put, ran the shuttles six days a week, or even seven, the rec center, and you pick set spots throughout, so you come over the, the hill, and your first stop's at the brew pub, then you go around through the traffic circle at the mall, then you come down to...
Yes.
You know, you come down, you stop here, and then you stop at the harbor front, and then you stop at the cornerstone, and then you go back and run several fifty. If you have a reliable service, people will hop on, hop off.
Yeah.
And it won't be as, like, I think there's all kinds of opportunities as we move forward.
There's all kinds of opportunities as you move forward. And as you put more things here, like at first you won't need all those things, you won't have the critical mass yet, but as you're building, building, and you get to this, you'll have critical mass, that, that makes sense, you know? So it's baby steps. And actually, those three D's where we showed taking, taking a little bit of parking every time, you know, you guys are planning up to here, you know? So we're only taking a few stalls away, so you deal with that. And then, then baby steps, you, you deal with, with the rest of it in the next phase. Next baby steps.
So the other thing with parking, and I'm not sure if people recall, but the parcade, which is, unless something changes, is actually paid off now. Like it's, we recruit our money to city us.
Yeah.
It was constructed to add, and I can't remember if it's one or two more, or it was designed or engineered to add two more. I mean, it's right there, it's close to downtown, and you will get your money back. I mean, it's just a gift.
And you know, having a parking problem is a real gift. That means you're busy. That's good news. And there is a place, I just happen to go there a lot because I had fam, I never travel anywhere, but when I did travel, I have family in Laguna Beach. Now, Laguna Beach is, was one of the precedents. It's a beautiful beachfront with volleyball and all sorts of fun things under. They have a parcade, which during the, during the week, people have monthly. And then on the weekend, when it's very busy, those monthly parkers give up their stall, and somebody goes in there and they take, you know, five bucks to come park for the day in the parcade. And the parcade is probably more hidden than this one, you know what I mean? And people learn to know where to find it. Now, I don't know what the arrangements are with that parcade, if monthly parkers would be willing to give up their stall on the weekend and then do casual during the weekend. You know, but that's just one idea of many ideas of how to deal with those things.
Would they still be able to have a car show along the Greenbelt here?
So the idea was that when we did this, was that you could probably still do the car show. I mean, it's on a smaller scale, I'm not sure how many cars come to the car show, actually.
Two hundred.
Two hundred, yeah. So I don't think I have two hundred stalls here. So that was one of the ideas that when we did this, they said, "Well, maybe that can happen somewhere else," you know, but, or it's, you know, you bring it and you put it along the street. But then you take away, because the car show happens during Harbor Fest, right? Yeah, just making sure, by for the other. So the idea would be that you kind of want that to be for people visiting Harbor Fest. And is there another way we can accommodate those cars at another location, you know? Otherwise, you would need the shuttle on, you know, doing a shuttle on special days like Harbor Fest, you could set up all the cars here, 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 alternatively, and have signs that say, "Park and ride for free," you know? And then they park at the rec center, and people get shuttled. They keep using the rec center. Or the mall parking, an arrangement with the mall parking, which is always half-empty. You know, that we have parking that sits half-empty. You know, that's what the parking study found, was that there is parking that's empty. And it's not even using private, we can have relationships with private property, such as the mall. But then, we really found on-street parking, during the peak hours, we found available on-street parking, ten minute walk from Harbor Fest. So, you know, it's, I mean, as this builds up though, we'll need those kinds of solutions. Just like on a bomber, on a bomber game in Winnipeg, you will see those little picket signs that say, "Park here, five bucks." And it'll be the car dealer that the rest, yeah, and it's just like other commercial restaurants and retail along, along Pembina, who get to make some money on bombering the days. And that's the kind of thinking that we need here.
Prox, can I, can I just make that a part of it?
Yes, we should.
I have a parking comment to make though too before, do you mind if I make my parking comment first, Rory? So I love the idea of this little retail node here and this, this docking.
Yeah.
I mean, maybe a location for a parcade though is here as well. If you're going to be renting out seasonal slips to people and having this retail node, this might be a good spot for a parcade.
For sure, and I think in all of this, as we said, is baby steps. So the baby step is, let's add a parking lot, because it's way cheaper investment, and let's baby step. And then when we run out of parking in different places around the downtown, which I'm convinced we have room, as long as we have relationships with private businesses who can then make money, we can move into ideas like building a parcade here and that kind of thing. We are also looking at this land, we're getting a geotech study to see if, if this can come down and become additional.
Is that that hill?
Yeah, there's a, there's a house foundation on it.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we're gonna, we're looking at that.
My question would be to Megan. Can we get rid of those wooden signs?
Oh, please, can we?
No, I'm just asking.
To build a CPR, CPR project? I'm not too sure on that, I think they might be on CP probably, yes, so.
There would have to be a request that we make with CP, passing through to where we've discarded this project. I don't have the property lines out here, but it's kind of, we checked up how we went into the master plan.
Here's your Oakland.
Are we still in their game?
In this area here.
Was it Garfield just?
Just around the place there.
You're kidding me?
Yeah, and then there was the house.
Yeah, but finally you turned this up here, you're right.
That was to be the Bishop's.
And then there was a couple, years ago, there was a couple of warehouses. My grandfather owned one of them and it was expropriated.
Exactly.
That was the car lot there and there was another CPR house.
Now we're gonna, for the, because of time, we're gonna move away from parking for a moment and Rory, you wanted to go somewhere else for a minute?
Very quickly, and I don't even know if it's realistic, when you look at, I was, when I relooked at the plan over the weekend, when you relook at this.
Thank you for doing your homework.
I think everybody did.
I'm just kidding.
Is there a spot?
Yeah.
Is there an opportunity for a small amphitheater to take this setup? Like we're talking, we're talking with Cloud Park, maybe potential there. We're talking over here, we're attracting all these people here. You know, the walking, the biking.
Well, what, what kind of?
The small.
For what to happen?
Purpose of it.
Yeah.
Purpose would be focusing on local talent, summer talent. Many, many concerts, something to that effect.
But why wouldn't we use the tent?
Well, that's fine, I, I just.
You know, but the idea of buskers, you know, like the buskers, you know, again, I'm sorry, I'm using the forks, I'm sure this is Montreal, how it works, all with them. So those, just so you know, like the forks and their buskers, they actually interview, like they, people have to apply to be a busker and they schedule them. So in terms of animation, that is one of the ideas, is to always have something and somebody organize it, but like buskers, they can, they can enliven the space. Like there's, we don't need an amphitheater probably. For smaller venues, we have a venue here, clear tables, we got a venue here. You know, this, this becomes a medium venue, the pier can become a venue. McLeod Park, like you say, could be a venue. The great thing is when you walk along, say, the forks, the river, you can see they have these little jetties that become the stage, you know what I mean? And so we can, we can do things like that, for sure. I don't, yeah.
It's a thought, bring it up.
No, and this is a natural, anything, this is a natural amphitheater.
I'm good with the response.
And, and the other thing, just to add to Rory, because we, I'm good with parking. There was a discussion about Main Street, I mean, I, I personally in that, I, I know maybe some businesses won't like it, but that piece should be shut down all summer and it should be, or pedestrian traffic. And if you go to Ottawa on Spark Street, they went through the same thing, that where businesses were furious, but what they found is someone driving in a car thirty or forty kilometers an hour does not stop or look in the front window of that store.
Yeah.
But when you're, on your feet, you do.
You do.
And they have busker festivals there, I mean, we spent a whole, we spent twelve hours on Spark Street one day.
Is that right?
Going from, you know, like kiosk to kiosk to kiosk to busker.
Health fester was the same way, they just were everywhere along the.
Humans, there we go, right?
No, he means here.
No, on Main Street. But you can't, because you can't throw everything into one, all these little areas.
You kind of want to have critical mass. And, and I like your idea, Andrew, it's just that, that was explored with Main Street and because we have to bring trucks through here, it was kind of thrown out. So in the revitalization, if you talk to the city staff here, they'd kill us. They'd be probably saying, well, where do you want me to bring the delivery trucks?
We did it three times last time.
Oh, sorry, to do it, sorry, to do it periodically, yes.
But we're only able to do that because the main traffic, we could flow this way.
Yeah.
People came this way, I think that's more of a step once we get.
Well, yeah, and I love what was happening here, this summer, when you saw, you know, people taking over some parking and putting all patios in the infill that you guys did with the, I mean, that's good stuff and all that stuff should happen. Our role right now is to focus on this, and I don't think that this, that these, these two things can coexist. You know, you can do both of those. This, this definitely, we saw that coming alive, you know, where you take over the parking spot and you put up a patio, a lot of people were talking about it. I know that Hojo did it here on the Boulevard parks, right here. But I think that's, that's the same idea, and the idea we didn't talk about here is having this refurbished too, so it becomes a nicer place to put tables and restaurants.
So one of the things that was done in the original, in the first one, the Big Spruce, was there were three, I think it's sixty amp services dropped along for events along Main Street. There's one here, there's one down by Hojo's and there's one up by the Kandarisha.
They're there already.
They're there in existence, I'm just wondering is, would there be any of that built into that area? Because if you're planning, like talking festivals and busker festivals and stuff like that, you're going to need some power drops because that's essential.
I agree, and I think that is definitely, I'll just put it down here, but I agree with you, Mort. Like so this idea will need all of that.
Less than a hundred feet apart?
Yes, okay.
Because you, that's, that's generally, nobody wants to run their lighting wires or the power wires more than a hundred feet.
So that's the idea, is to provide that kind of service here and make it sort of, make create the critical mass here, and then this is already happening.
Yeah.
You know? And so those are, those are great comments, thank you.
So one other comment, and it was just on the docs and I forgot to ask it earlier, but all this development here, is that, is that just to bring people off the lake and bring them into all these activities? Or is that for rental purposes or accommodation or? Because we always, people always tell us that there's not enough places to park if they're coming in off the lake. And if we have more activities, I'm assuming we're going to get more draw off the lake?
At the time of the master plan, we felt, we had heard that there was not enough parking for big boats.
Yeah.
And then, I think I heard that at council actually. And then that there wasn't enough spots for people to come. These could be pay for use, for sure. And that provides some money towards maintenance operations, not like a major moneymaker. The biggest idea was that we bring people, we give them some amenities they might need, and we draw them into coming in here and spending money. And, and try to get people to come, have dinner, have lunch, you know, enjoy the harbor front.
Yeah, my suggestion was not like long-term summer eat or rentals, was more.
More casual.
Yeah, like, you know, even, like if I come from Norm in my boat and I come to Canora, a lot of times there was no place to park. So you didn't stop there, you went somewhere else out in the lake to eat or whatever, so.
Yeah, that's, that was sort of the findings, but I think it was brought up earlier that we're gonna, because those were based on 2018 demands, we're gonna look at what the 2021 demands are with the team to see if there's a portion that's monthly and if there's a portion that's day, we'll, we'll explore that. And, but it's good to hear that you guys are feeling there's, there is need for casual as well, not just monthly.
So the one thing, I don't want to go back to parking, but the one thing that I think we need to be discussing is, we're trying to get to our community, particularly this area. So when you do bring events in, like the car show and that, why wouldn't we sell that parking for the car show or those kinds of events? And encourage people to do more walking along the boardwalk and down on Main Street?
Oh, of course you could. It would be just a decision about, you know, that you take all this parking and that's a, that's an event planning decision. There's parking here to put the car show in, it would just be an event planning and logistics planning for the event people to say, have signage to say, "Park over there," and we'll give you a lift back.
Because I meant, like, we need to pedestrian these spaces through, and I think in most cases we don't have a parking problem, we have a bike and walker.
Yes.
And we need to encourage people to do that, and I'm just going to reiterate, reiterate again, we need to have an active transportation movement here because we do not, we're missing an opportunity and we will hear about it.
No, you're right, thanks, dude, that's a good, very good point, Sharon. How do people feel about the kiosks, the idea of the seasonal kiosk? Do you see some demand for that kind of thing?
Again, it's going, I look at it and I look at it with my business brain and I say, what can I make in six months?
Yeah.
And that's, summer, short-term businesses are very difficult.
Yeah.
Something that you can only run for five or six months a year, so I'm both ways on that one. I love, I love the idea because they're, but it's, it's going to be fairly limited.
I like the idea of kiosks more.
In that location, on the pier?
Because I always thought this, before this, I always thought using Main Street and Matheson Street Piers to do kind of the same.
Yes.
Like the one summer when the brew pub did, I think it was the day we did just the Plaid event.
Down on the second, on Matheson.
Yeah, and, well, no, they had the Plaid event at the Harbor Front.
Right.
It was the same day where they, they did the beer on the pier.
Beer on the pier.
Beer on the pier.
And it was, you know, I just think there's lots of, so if it would work there, it would probably work really well.
So our construction drawings can show these, but it doesn't mean we have to build them, right? And we can show a design for a kiosk. And I would say, I agree, and I think that, say for example, you guys decide to build this seating area for us, but you don't put this on pavilion or the pier yet. There's still opportunity to build, there's some opportunity in space to still build like seasonal kiosks that you can triddle out some of these ideas that we heard that people said, why isn't Market Day every day? Maybe not the full deal, but some of it. Well, then you could, you can explore the idea of having, you know, some of those people who would want to be here five days a week or three, a shared kiosk, you know, that they come and set up. The idea of selling beverages, if you don't have a restaurant down here, but maybe you have something that just sells beverages and ice cream, that kind of thing. Yeah, so it's, it's just playing off those ideas, yes.
Next phase of public engagement, is this, is the public going to have an opportunity to go over this or with the?
So the plan is, and I can put it up on the screen, but it's easy to tell you. So our, our first step was seeing the implementation team, and then we came to see you guys. Now, what we're doing is based on the comments we've provided, we're providing for the implementation team, we will then evolve the design. We also have engagement planned, or we are planning engagement with the city right now with First Nations, because some of these things require their input. And once we have some initial engagement with the First Nations groups as well as additional with our project management team, they'll preview what we've drawn, we'll go back to the implementation team, which is the larger city group, they'll give us comments, and once we do that, we'll go to the public and it'll look, they've seen this, they've seen this, but it will have evolved from this and have more detail that they can comment on. We won't be so far that we can't change anything. We'll be at the point that we've evolved the ideas further than the master plan and get comments from them. We'll go back to the drawing board, we'll, you know, go into more detail and make changes based on the public's commentary. Our project management team and our, our city implementation team will review that. We have one-on-one discussions already started with people at the city regarding the prospective areas. And then we'll go back to the public again, and, but in that time, it'll be like an open house of, here's where we ended up.
Yeah, because the only comment I wanted to add, like the Lunar Fair, Lunar for having.
Water.
So that, that area, I mean, when I look at these plans, it looks to me like Birmingham Drive is totally blocked off. And I think that's, that's set up temporarily with the bollards, so.
Yes.
I don't know if there's a way to update that drawing so that people will go interpret it that way.
That's a great idea.
I think we will get a public pushback, because that's a mean thoroughfare. Like when there's a lot of traffic on Main Street, people do teach us through the harbor front during business hours.
That's a great.
Me days, like people need to know that that's still a thoroughfare.
Yeah, you know what, that's a really good point. And I think we can easily do that with some modeling to show cars in it as well as here it is on a regular day, and then here's what it looks like during Harbor Fest.
Yeah, I think that's important.
Yeah, that's good, that's a good point. Megan's writing notes for me, so.
So Konstantin, when?
I'm sort of standing in the middle.
Nope, that's okay.
Okay?
So when you met with the, I'm just going to say CIT, because I keep forgetting.
Yeah, it's easier, isn't it?
Did they have any major deviations from what the original plan looked like? Or things they wanted to change that were major?
Their, their, no, not major, but they had similar queries as in, what should the docs be? Are they monthly or are they casual? What, what ratio should that be? So they had similar comments as you guys. I think that there was some, some good stuff from, from regarding what they'd like to see interpreted. It was really just building on this, there was some discussion, more detailed considerations. We had lots of discussion about the washrooms and how we had perceived it, that it would be individual stalls rather than creating gendered rooms, you know, men, women, that'd just be singular stalls. We asked them to explore that if they're on board with that concept.
Is it the ancient model where there's just holes in the floor and everybody?
Oh, yeah, it's, well, Italian, they put the porcelain on the ground and then you just stand. It's probably cleaner than sitting on the toilet, but I can't believe I'm being taped to right now. I can't really. Anyways, so.
What's her experience in Hong Kong?
So we're, we're getting into detailed discussions with the CIT more. They've sort of, a lot of them are part of the master plan process, so they're kind of bought into where things are, nobody wants things necessarily moved. It's, that, that's great, except sort of maybe some, you know, just property line requirements that we have to adjust. There is some concern about the runner, that how it works and, you know, going curbless, you know, so we, we have marching orders to, to work with the roads department. You know, so we'll be checking in with all those groups. So it's more technical stuff that we're getting, I would say. Do you remember anything major that I'm missing?
I think one was that parking on the north side, like the opportunity to steer off the top of the hill in favor of having additional parking there versus the lakefront.
Yes. And, and we're, we're exploring that, because they were thinking that, you know, you of, of the lakefront will be all the backs of those cars, you know, and is that attractive? You know, so can we put more parking on the, on the north side? So we're looking into that, we have to look at obviously the property lines as well as KGS is going to do some geotechnical investigation on that hill and just see. You know, when you look at it, there's definitely rock there. It's just what kind of rock, you know, can, is it easily taken down? Yeah.
All right, so we're getting close to the end of our time. Is there things that you want to really?
Well, no, I guess I felt like I would just, if there was any major deviations for you guys or any new things that you think should be happening on the harbor front that's not explicitly shown, you know, you, if you put it on the spot right now, so of course you can always share that with Kyle, Adam and Megan, and they'll get that to me. But I think that would be important for me to hear now, because as our team mobilizes to work with the public and with the teams to detail this, it's very important that we get it right. This is the important step.
So Konstantina, we, we're talking about the buildings. We, we've talked about how we're not focused on the buildings right now, like, at what time do you see us maybe turning our focus to the buildings? Because that is a key part of the plan.
Well, the buildings are a big investment, so, and I, and you're right. To me, particularly the rest of our is a great moneymaker, depending on what kind of governance model you go, you go after. But I think it needs to be geared to the, the federal monies and what they're wanting to see. I think there's, for the, the water pavilion, we call it, because it's supposed to be an net zero building, there will be federal money probably, if not already, you know, towards that kind of thing. And I think that you guys, Canora has been fabulous at following the money. So you have a master plan and now it's following where the money is coming from, matching funds and that sort of thing. So timing does really depend. In our master plan, we talk about partnerships as well, and I'll just say this, that something like this, for example, could be a partnership with First Nations. And I'll just say this, that something like this, for example, could be a partnership with First Nations because, um, they have an interest and we're excited to be part of this when we last talked to them. And so we have to keep those conversations open, um, because they may have an interest and they can leverage probably money you can't. And, um, so, you know, having partnerships to develop somewhere where they feel they can educate people about First Nations would be fabulous.
I'm glad that you said that, that should be the priority, because I mean, we already have the discovery center, which is kind of an interpretive center. So I wouldn't duplicate what we had going on there.
Yes.
In this location. So that's, that was gonna be my comment. I didn't wanna get too far into the building stuff, but that's not the purpose of today.
I think, I think there's lots of options, you know, sort of, you know, maybe not quite a conference center, but an option for some meeting rooms. And I think there's some ways we can think about how to use that structure.
People really talked about that there's not a lot of like four-season opportunities on this waterfront, that they can have a wedding banquet. Or, you know, so this space could be very, uh, fluid and, um, flexible as well. Um, so yeah, there's lots of the, and, and that we had as part of our team, uh, we did have a business analyst who did the market analysis, high level for a master plan. But I mean, um, as you move into these things, you know, using, um, these types of professionals is helpful. You know, we've often, um, severed off a project like this and then studied it with a team of, um, business analysts. We know a few that we work with that we like. And they will come up with a plan. You know what I mean? How, how do you fund it? How do you, and that's like its own little study. Yeah. But this is, um, the master plan for a longer term vision. You know, you're not gonna see all these things tomorrow. Um, you know, there's things, some of them, as Megan said, are easier to sort of chip away at, you know? Um, but the other ones, we shouldn't lose sight of them because they're important. Um, so part of our marching orders will be, um, one of the things that we would wanna hear, and I know I'll be asking your project management team, and I don't know, they're gonna have to answer this for me, is, is as we build this, and we do construction drawings for this and we're bringing services out of this washroom, should we be considering that these other facilities might go ahead as we size services, you know?
I, I would. Personally, I, I think we need to plan for it.
Yeah, build for the future or air design.
Yeah, and as best we can, we'll mitigate that, you know, see if there's other ways. Our engineering team is happy to sort of look, okay, well, you know what? We don't have to worry about this, cause, you know, services can come from over there. But we will be, our team will be thinking about that if you want us to. But if you said to me, there's no way in a million years we're gonna do that, then we won't, you know? So as it gets, becomes more serious, the further along in our process we go, when we start sizing pipes and stuff, yeah.
Just to teach us that, quick comment, go back to something more that said, with the power, um, I'm not sure the right term, no. Power opens on the harbor front, you can go along, um, the harbor front towards Husky and Muskie. It's always been an issue on Main Street, um, when, when Main Street slows down and having vendors, you can see all these extension cords running and running and, you know, noise of diesel and.
Extension cords for what, sorry?
Well, no, but on Main Street, um, on some of the things, because we don't have the power that, of the set station, because that's all I'm saying.
No, no, of course. And, and, I'm sorry, now I know what, what you're, I thought you, it was something.
No, I wasn't talking to Karen for the winter.
I, that's what I was thinking. I was like, what? No, um, and I, you know, for, when we did Harborfront, we, I think we did a pretty good job of putting in plugs for like food trucks and making sure, we had lots of meetings with your people. When we did Harborfront, we met with your Harborfest organizers, your KBI organizers and your Market Day organizers. I actually sat down with each of those heads of, who organized that. And we, we, we said, okay, this is how you used to do it over here in that parking lot. Here's how we think you can do it. Is that okay? You know, so we're gonna have to have those kinds of conversations with each of your events organizers, sort of like Market Day.